It is always a good time to save money and West Tennessee Bank has a savings account that is just right for you. Making regular contributions now can lead to years of financial prosperity in the future. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal housing lender member FDIC.
If Don Thursday I.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion secured. Good question.
The last amendment, the third, we'll say is for not some saving. It's part of the road. But none of them will move on.
This is five sixty-nine two oh three.
Yes.
Got a motion, second approved of the Howard amendments is presented. Any questions? If Don Thursday I.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Does anybody have a hard question?
Thank you.
Definitely trust me.
I thought you had a report this time. I think we've had a raise since mid-March. We obviously got the mail out, but it's in my desk in the corner. I got to see them. I've got the mail in here.
Question is, Tom.
Both the trustees, please. Please approve the trustee's report.
Second.
Motion made saying we approve the trustee's report is presented. Any questions? If Don Thursday I.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried.
I appreciate that. You make them comment.
No. Yes, you can't go in.
On the third page of the report, it's got the tax placement for it. Right now with ninety-three percent, we're going off March as of March very first, we were ninety-three percent collected for the 2017 taxes. A few delinquents were sent out to minors at the end of this week. So we hope to bring that on down to five years for July. Let you know, we kind of feel like we're rocking on pretty good. So keep posting. Thank you.
Next one is County General.
Did everyone get a copy of the reports? For the reports? Okay. County General is running pretty good. It's seventy point fifty-one percent. Of course, at the end of that month, it should be seventy-five, so we're a little bit behind the June one we're calling expenditures. Anyone have any questions on that?
Hold on, you guys did. I know we did seventy percent of our thirty. We should be. If we spend all of these seventy-five.
Yeah.
So about five, five percent of the hundred thirty right now. That's good. Any questions? Got a motion, second approved of this. Any questions? If Don Thursday I.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Amendment.
Okay. Did everyone, Mr. Bernard, did everyone copy of any budget amendments?
Yeah.
Okay. In County General, we have just hit some highlights. There is one, the fifty thousand dollars for the jail. We had a heart patient in there. We're actually in the process of getting some of that back. So we're going to need to bend that line a little bit, but you'll probably be in next year's budget, but we will receive some of that money back on that one. We've got several grants coming in for the, well, it was for the Hova grant on the election machines, a hundred twenty thousand. Justin Emerson had a thirty-two hundred eighty-dollar grant for courtroom security, I believe, or maybe it was office security. Johnny Barry said the emergency management grant in County General. Any questions?
I believe we've got him now.
Second. Motion made saying we approve the budget amendments is presented. Any questions?
Is this why I wrote all those? Come on.
Yes, it will. I wrote call. Any questions? If I wrote call, then.
Johnny Gardner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yeah.
Jackie Butler. Tim Crow.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale. John Wells. Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Sixteen four. Motion passed. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we have, we have one more amendment that I did not get on. Is she here? The request from the trustee's office is for equipment and software. It's in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. It's time for him to upgrade. I just upgraded back in January and our equipment is getting, was getting pretty old. And so is here, the obvious, probably at least it's over mine or older, so we need to go ahead and address that.
Do that this year, not next year. We'll do it this year.
I'll do it this year.
Okay. All right.
Hello, Denver.
Second.
Motion made saying we give approval to this amendment is presented for equipment for the trustee's office. I guess that's going to need a roll call vote, too.
Fund balance.
Fund balance, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Don't have anything to add on that.
I'm.
Johnny Gardner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yeah.
Jackie Butler.
Tim Crow.
Yes. Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale. John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Sixteen four.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Okay. Then we have the solid waste.
On waste.
The solid waste is running very good. It's at seventy point seventy-six percent at the end of March. Solid waste is a little over, about four percent over or under budget. Any questions on that?
I believe we've got him.
Second. Motion made saying we approve to this solid waste. Order report is presented. Any questions on that? If Don Thursday I.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Amendment.
Yes, we did. We have some amendments for him also. Most of it is for the new money coming in for the one point two million dollar grant. We got that two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollar amendment is coming in, and that was used for truck and construction on your building. Is that right?
That's right.
Have you got any new metal started?
Yeah, they're putting the metal on the sides today, so that should be completed next week.
Now, this, this is money that we're going to get back, but you got to spend it to get it.
I believe we've got him.
Second. Motion made saying we approve to the amendment. Motion made, Mr. Blackstock and Mr. Emerson.
So would have been that, how do you know the big deal, buddy?
Yep. And roll call vote. Any questions on that? Four, five, vote. Everybody understand? All right, have a roll call.
Johnny Gardner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yeah.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Crow.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale. John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Sixteen four.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion will be live reported, Mr. Stacey.
I mean, you're great, but I did want you all to see the summary program, which is now four pages long. Some of you have children, several of us have grandchildren. So all ages can come, but I just wanted you to see what's going on at the library.
Thank you, ma'am.
Besides my usual course. I want to say, I know, obviously, we're not doing anything anytime soon. I do hope you will drop by this summer because there is little younger than there on children's programs. And Cambray Lot from Eastchester and also now Cambray Lot at Westchester will be at the library this summer, so that's important. Fifty-seven thousand children will be at the library this summer. I'm sorry. Can you talk to me?
Yeah, I can answer a question, Mr. Stacey. Thank you, ma'am. The next item is resolution to approve the glitter grant resolution for 2018 and 19. We just get the one I think on the seventeen, eighteen, most of the eighteen, nineteen.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Crowell, Commissioner, unexactly. I've got a motion, second approved, the resolution for the glitter grant. Any questions on this? If Don Thursday I.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. The next is resolution to approve the U.S. Communities Purchasing Cooperative Interlocal Participation Group. That's where they go out and buy stuff, don't have to get into the national companies. It's the ones who already got the bids on stuff, the useful, buy from them. They've already fitted. It's the same thing we did here.
State contract.
State, state, like a state contract.
I believe we've got him.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve the, I'm going to read the whole thing again, this participation group for corporate purchases. Any questions? If Don Thursday I.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. The next item is the ambulance contract. We did not get finished with that. I go ahead and bring you up to date for what we are. We are, they offered us zero. We're right now, we're paying two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month, like a year. Ambulance service is average of two twenty-five. They've gone to zero in Magnette County. They're offering us zero also. What that does, that the network balances, they can send the closest ambulance. It should be a lot better coverage. For instance, they've got a housing, the house ambulance now at Adamsville, which I have an implement, so they get there quicker than we can get there from Henderson. So it, but by now, it's a zero contract. We are going to have to build a building, but I'm still asking for a little more money out of it. We haven't got that approved yet from, from the hospital, so we can't take action on that tonight, but that's what we're, if you have questions. Okay. I'll go right there. The next item is going to be discussed, he did our tradition of the public safety building. This, we have applied for the last two years, trying to get some money out of the state on their, from them on this. They turned us down both times. We're just about well off to do it ourselves, arguing their money, having to manage it anyway, because there's too many hoops to jump through to get there. I gave y'all a sheet tonight of the estimate, that's a rough estimate on what it's going to cost to do that. I think the estimate costs a hundred and thirty-four thousand, something, hundred and thirty-four thousand, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars even. This will be five units. Ever since that thing was put in, it's been nothing but trouble. There's no telling how much money we spend on a thing repairing a thing every year. It went out to the weekend, we had to spend some more today. And I'd like to go ahead and do this, make y'all approve of it. What I would like to do, if, once we get this ambulance contract nailed down with them, I'd like to take the money for that, for this air conditioning, for the public safety building and for the ambulance building out of our million dollar CD we have today. We can pay that back probably in four years with that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we're paying now for the ambulance service. Does that, y'all understand, tell us where I'm coming from?
The business from having to borrow it, buddy.
Right. We don't have to borrow money and pay interest. We won't be drawing any interest on money, but we're not drawing much, generally about one, one and a half percent in that, one percent. If we borrow it, probably three or four, so it'd be foolish to borrow money and pay interest on it. But we'd like to go ahead and get a motion to go ahead and proceed with this air conditioning on the, on the public safety building. This complex, this will be five units where each one of each, each place can have their own control on it. Right now, there's not two controls in there, I'm thinking. Some of them burn up, some of them freeze.
Is there five units there now?
No, there's one big one.
If you've never been running there, it's a mess.
It's a mess.
It's terrible.
And when you, when you, we have this one worked on, it's not four, five, one dollars on the top, four, five thousand, most of them.
How old is it?
How old is it?
Put in with the buildings.
No, it's been replaced since then, Russell Blake was, you remember, I can get that replaced.
Almost around five or six, two thousand five or six.
Probably from two thousand five, six.
It never, it never had worked.
It didn't, and those one didn't. What's your?
They just don't call it in two thousand five or six. Yeah, that's really the one. So yeah, they just.
Go, okay, sorry.
That's usually when they're going to build.
Okay.
Basically, they have an old boiler system.
That's what it is. It has to heat water to, to run the air conditioner, which I collect a sense of maintenance.
It heats water, so.
Yeah.
You, you are in business, so.
We had, we had this estimate on, but I don't think it'll go one fifty. I like it approved for one fifty if we could, didn't we? Go ahead with it and get it built.
The motion approved. Second.
We got a motion, a second, to approve this work on the public safety building. There's been new money coming out of the CD, so we need to have a roll call vote on it.
Johnny Gardner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yeah.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Crow.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Sixteen four.
Okay, thank y'all. The motion passed. The next is going to be the school board wants to do some bond issues, to do some roof work, air conditioning work on this. Superintendent, move in there, chief.
Commissioners, we've had an opportunity to do some recognition of board delegates that have come to us at our board meetings, requesting certain parts of our school district to have upgrades and new additions or new projects altogether. Some things that have been pitched to our board members tonight is a renovation of our auditorium to make it more conducive for larger groups to be able to use it. Again, for those of you who have been there anytime lately, you know that those seats have been there since the day one. There has been some upgrades with audio visual, but there's a lot of things lacking there. Carpets have been replaced, and we've still had some issues with carpets being damaged due to water. So that's one area that we have had in our board meetings as far as a request to improve. We also have some needs with our parking lots in our school districts. We have replaced and repaired some as we could. The last one that we repaired was in Westchester. We repaired portion of it and painted some lines in Eastchester. We have some issues at all of our campuses for parking lots. And we've also had, as of late, requests to construct new facilities for some of our sporting groups. Baseball and softball have made requests to have some means facility at those locations for dressing rooms and batting cages, areas for them to practice and get ready for ball games. In that process, dealing with this, again, we do still find great batting in the funds that we get from sales tax. So what Stacy Keen and I have been meeting with different groups, we've, we have already done some preliminary discussions with three different groups. Duncan Williams, Cumberland Securities, we're two different bonding agents that we have already met with. Our goal is to stay under the sales tax revenue that are generated from our sales tax. We are seeking something less than, well, twelve years or less, and we're seeking to find a, to secure a bond for no more than one point eight million, which will take care of these projects. In that setup, Duncan Williams and Cumberland Securities, and after talking to the mayor, he turned us to a local government group, we communicated those three. But with Duncan Williams, that's been the one that has currently, with quotes, have been the most reasonable. And what it is, is going into a twelve-year note for no more than, again, one point eight million dollars. The payout back to the bonding agent would be under what we're getting yearly from the sales tax revenue. We're getting approximately, we're budgeting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year out of the sales tax, the sales tax, and that goes into our capital profits to honor what the board and what you have voted to approve. It's for us to use our sales tax revenue to upgrade and improve our existing sites. As you know, from our past experience, we have always used our fund balance to do major destruction, including what we're doing right now in high school. But right now, we're at a point where we're at a threshold that we can't do any other projects. We are utilizing our sales tax revenue, our capital profits right now to do a roof at Westchester, and we're starting the roof at, or soon to start a roof at Middle School over the major part of the building. But including with this is also a roof at high school, and then our initial quote, re-roofing the high school will be at seven hundred thousand dollar expense. So with these, we're looking to go, like we said, into a possible twelve-year note where we can pay off and again, always monthly have a dollar amount still left behind that will give us some revenue in that same line out of the capital projects that if we have emergency comes up, that we can still address that without having to tackle fund balance. So also with Duncan and Williams, they have given us the opportunity after, I can't remember the exact number of years, I want to say after five years, they give us a chance to pay back the principal without the interest. So if we have the revenue generated and if we had no special emergency projects that requires us to use the same fund, we will pay back for our principal. So this has just given us a chance to address some of the needs in our community, asking to express us to do it now rather than waiting for the fund balance gets up to where we can handle that threshold with new projects. So what we're asking for is an opportunity to see a bond, no more than one point eight million dollars.
Motion to approve. Give the permission to seek bond to take care of these problems.
Motion made saying we give this, give the authority to go ahead and do the issue of the bonds for the approved projects, one point eight million. Let me say too, that this is, this is not costing us anything. This is the money that was voted on by the city. The city gave up their part of the sales tax to go to schools as long as it went to capital improvements. And that's, that's where this is coming from, Mr.
It's just coming for the next twelve years, is that what you're saying?
That's right. Now, these are just quotes right now. We have, but our quote, the most recent quote we have from Duncan Williams gives us a rate that is under what we're already budgeting in that lineup.
And during the next twelve years, you estimate that if you have any other needs, you'll be able to cover it.
We'll have possibly forty fifty thousand dollars that will be remaining in that fund balance that won't be, or that lineup that won't be touched by this payment back.
Per year?
Per year. Not by month, per year.
That includes the softball field.
Well, again, softball, the baseball field, their pitch to us was much less than what we're planning to do. Their pitch to us was just to put a slab floor and walks. We feel like that there's a need for something more than that because six months later, they'll be asking for it. So that will be providing some type of restroom, some type of dressing room, type of facility along with it. We don't have any plans with that yet, and it's just hypotheticals right now for that. But again, looking at the dollar amounts of what we've already secured, as far as quotes will be for roof or the renovations to the auditorium, we have those rates from work done a few years back.
Draw up our lifespan of these roofs to, to, to.
Well, I mean, they tout somewhere between fifteen and twenty years.
So it's going to be, it's going to be a while. We're out.
Well, that's, that's the reason why we want to go something much later than, less than twenty years, because you'd be right back to the same boat. We expect to pay this off quicker than twenty.
Any other questions? We'll need roll call on that, do we? I guess I guess I'd not prefer a roll call. Have a roll call vote.
Johnny Gardner.
Yes.
Larry Love.
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yeah.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Crow.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Sixteen four.
Great motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, we stay up there.
Yes, sir. And I'm going.
The next item, the school board is asking for some land that we have out of the softball field. It blocked us, the city, the city has already relinquished their part of their chair and and their, and us did the same thing. That is mainly the parking lot out there that's on the softball field.
What's your land for, if you do?[1623.12]
So this is just an opportunity for us to have that property dated to, so we can put a project on there.
The church can't have an outstanding girl softball season and coaches for that several years.
And if you've gone out to both fields, either field, I think you're gonna see the, the care that has been done at the fields has been done very well. I'm very pleased with what the coaches and staff and students have done to keep that field and that area looking in good shape.
Good. Commission, low, man. Motion, we approve of that? Thank you.
Second.
I argue, if you second?
Yes.
Order. Okay, any other discussion on this? The only thing I'd like to add to that was if it, if there's any easements that we have on, I don't think we have any.
City has an easement, but we will take care of any survey and just speed up with the purposes of.
Any questions? If on Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion taken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Didn't hurt too bad, did it?
Yes, sir.
The consideration additions to the maintenance covenant, I've reached that tonight, so we can pass on that tonight. Uh, Mr. Ron Elderman, Superintendent of Chickasaw State Park, like to bring y'all up to the table, what's going on at the park.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to, uh, fill everybody in officially on what all's happening at the park, right here. All kinds of things that we're doing, that we are in our, sometimes, so, um, but currently, uh, the footbridge that goes across the lake, uh, we have finished that project for all intents and purposes, and we'll actually be doing a ribbon cutting on it, uh, Wednesday morning at ten o'clock. Uh, so that project was finally, uh, probably moved along after way too many years before done. Um, currently, we're under construction in the RV campground as well, upgrading that campground to meet the modern needs of RVs that we have today. The thing is much larger than it was in nineteen sixty-two when that campground was available. So all these sites are getting, uh, lengthening and widened, uh, as well as sprayed, so they'll be, uh, basically the first to blow them. Meet the size and the, which require now, creating utilities and sewer. Uh, right now, we've got the RV equipment shut down, doing work in there, so we're about half capacity as far as available campsite. We're hoping to have that done by later day, but, uh, due to the massive amount of rain we got this spring, it's actually looking like that's probably gonna be, um, on into September before that does finally get wrapped up and new comps with other campgrounds. So we'll have camping any time, although it has impacted our occupancy and the, the revenue that we're, we're making in, and, and the tax that we provide, so that has taken a hit, and I fully expect that to recover pretty well. Uh, and I expect our occupancy to be substantially higher once we have a facility that actually accommodates a lot of the, the new RVs and trailers. One other product we're doing, uh, that's not really noticeable, but we are creating the sewer system. We operate our own sewer system out there. Uh, so bringing that up to standards to also meet the anticipated increase in demand that we've got, uh, coming with the upgrades to the campground. One other thing that is coming up, uh, probably be next year, two thousand nineteen, is our cabinets at the park. Uh, those are all going to be limited or full total remodel. Um, they're gonna be restored to look exactly as they did in nineteen thirty-seven when they were built, so using all the historical materials. Um, restoring those to, uh, eventually make the, that whole side of the park, uh, national registers for district. So we'll be able to kind of capitalize on some of the, the issue there that the parks created over all the, all these years. Uh, one other facility that we've done announced, we've involved in big capital projects, that we have, uh, finally reopened and renovated the swimming bath out there at the park. So that's currently now going to be our camp shore as well as the, the restroom facilities, and that just recently opened, so we'll be open, uh, there all season. As well as the camp shore, and, uh, we're putting in a museum and major center into that building as well, so. Uh, probably have another month before that's, uh, we're going, that's highlighting the, uh, Chickasaw Nation as well as, um, the Jackson Purchase, uh, creation of the park and the great depression was all high and, uh, probably bit to, why, why the parks are in the first place, so. Uh, we have the opportunity to tell that story to the, the folks that come to this park, so we jumped on it and be, be moving forward with that. So just wanted to kind of fill you in on what else happened, um, there at the park and, uh, make you get aware of what all the products we are, are doing and aren't doing, and, uh, the direction that we're kind of headed in that. So I want you to have any, any quick questions or anything from here real quick.
Okay. Restaurant, you said you have?
The restaurant, uh, the restaurant currently is closed. Um, we have done a building survey, uh, of the facility there. Uh, looking to see what the need is for the building. Um, basically, unfortunately, hasn't been touched in decades, so basically it's a ruined building. So the amount of work that it needs, basically everything in the building would have to come up to moniker, which is the amount of renovation needed. So right now, we're trying to get basically cost analysis of how much that's going to take, uh, to bring the building up and what kind of return on investment we get with reopening the restaurant. And unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot more, uh, pass along of it. My opinion is to be able to reopen and operate again, and if it does, it'll be operated as a, a safe facility rather than a concession operation the way that it had been operated for the past twenty-five or so years.
You are being capitalized, but it gonna be a little higher?
Uh, the sites we're adding sewer will be higher. Um, I believe they're gonna go from twenty-five to thirty-two dollars a night. But they'll have to be on the surface.
Appreciate what's left. Ron, too, he, Greg, just a little bit, he, he's done a tremendous job out there at that park. I appreciate you, Jeff, Ron, and, uh, if all, if you know, if you hadn't been through there lately, you drive through there. There's a lot of, a lot of changes going on, and there'd be a lot more going on, but, uh, I appreciate Ron. The job he's done out there, and the, the state appreciates it, too, because he, he's trying to take care of the, um.
Well, thank you. Ribbon cutting, wind dented, wind dented box, let me reach. Be some of the first people to walk across it, if you guys. Thank you. Yes, thank y'all.
Okay.
Sir.
Sir.
Alright, so, uh, every once in a while, we make a mistake in there, and the only money that we generally pay out are always to the trustee, you know, but, we, we don't charge wheel tags to, uh, veterans that are a hundred percent service connected, just like, oh, we had a lady come in and we renewed tag for her husband, and we didn't know. Well, a couple days later, she's back in there, and we discovered that he's a hundred percent service connected, just like. So I just want to be able to run them about sixty-five, thirty-five, seven, five.
A little deliberate.
Is any questions? If on Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion taken. You got anything else to say? Alright, we need a, we need to go forward with the question this time. Anybody anywhere? Alright, if not, let's start the district.
Yes, sir, we have, sir. Carmen, Dave Loftus. Shannon Kay Austin. Randy Hindley. Angie Denise Hudson. Deanna Morrison. Maggie Joe Gordon. James Diane. Sharon. Wanda Cooper. Janet Kate Johnson. Crystal Marie Lash. Sherry Newman. That's it.
Motion made saying we chart the districts as presented. Any questions? If on Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion taken. That concludes that. Jim, though, I already asked if anybody else had anything they wanted to say in this hearing, anything? You guys are giving favors pretty good.
I know of entertainment, so have a special call meeting just as quick as we get confirmation back from the store.
Okay. On that, I hope we adjourned.